Item fifteen, Local Government Reorganisation Proposal, which is pages sixty-five to one-three-two, and the contents of the Agenda Supplements. So this is report number sixty, stroke, twenty-twenty-five. Members will be aware that we did have two special meetings earlier this year on the topic of local government reorganisation and devolution. And this item is not to be a rehash of those discussions, or discuss the merits or otherwise of local government reorganisation. As set out in the report, members have been asked to review the current draft of each of the available final proposals, that include Rutland, using the criteria recommended by Cabinet and scrutiny to identify the proposals which most strongly meet the statutory criteria. At the end of the debate, all members not currently on Cabinet will be invited to participate in a non-binding informal vote to indicate which proposal, if any, they support. The vote has no legal status, as it comes under the Local Government Act two thousand. This is not a full decision, but one for the executive. Cabinet is meeting tomorrow afternoon to take the formal decision on the submission of a LGR proposal. Nevertheless, the informal vote will be informative to Cabinet, and will be borne in mind during their deliberations. councillor Waller, can you introduce the report, please?
Thank you very much, Chairman. As I've said before in this chamber, none of us want to be here. We know Rutland is a good and financially sound council, and so what we are debating is to try and find the least worst option. The best option would be no change, but we know the government wants change. They're set on abolishing county and district councils, and have swept up small unitary councils in this reorganisation. Therefore, when I received the invitation letter in February, I had two choices: do nothing, and let government decide our fate, or try and influence the minister's decision by helping create a new authority in which Rutland prosper, and its name and ceremonial status be retained. I decided to do the latter, at stance supported by our local government cross-party working group. Rutland's invitation area was with the Leicestershire councils, and I and our officers worked with those councils, prepared to work with us. Sadly, county and city were not, hence you having three options before you tonight. As I've said in my answer to councillor Farina's question, I wanted to have a fourth option for you all to consider, a North Cistevan, South Cistevan, South Holland option. Given the complexities of local government changes, the Lincolnshire authorities clearly knew they were not going to include Rutland some months ago. They also knew that tonight, you would be giving Cabinet a steer. I wasn't prepared to preempt tonight's debate, or Cabinet tomorrow, by declaring last month that Rutland was battling Lincolnshire. Nevertheless, I was both disappointed and saddened that the Lincolnshire councils decided not to include us in their final proposal, and that therefore you do not have the opportunity to consider Rutland joining the Greater Lincolnshire Combined Authority area. Tomorrow, Cabinet will decide which of the options before us tonight to support, and we will all be listening closely to what you have to say, and particularly how you address the points referenced in paragraphs two-point-two-point-one to two-point-two-point-six, and two-point-six-point-one to two-point-eight-point-two. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Waller. As we are not making a formal decision tonight, we do not require a second, and we are now open to debate. Members. councillor Corby.
Thank you, Chair. Somebody's got to start, so it might as well be me. Members, earlier this year, the County Council Network, the evaluation of the Price-Waterhouse-Cooper analysis relating to local government reorganisation, showed that achieving economies of scale within local government will be determined by a number of factors. But it was clear that a minimum five-hundred-thousand population would be the single biggest driver in the creation of twenty-nine. If the recent government decision with regard to the Surrey LGR is anything to go by, particularly given that a three-unitary proposal was deemed compliant with government criteria, but with the single exception that the five-hundred-thousand population criteria was not met. Therefore, this led to the implementation of a two-unitary proposal to subject to government The North City South proposal, which I have to say is a compelling and exceptionally detailed proposal, particularly in respect of financial appraisal, does not fulfil that criteria, and by that I mean the five-hundred thousand people. The county proposal also does not meet that criteria. The county and city proposals, in my view, also lack financial depth, but have appraised more on the rag system, the red-amber-green system, against risk and government criteria. For me, I prefer to see the numbers, therefore the NCS proposal, very much more appealing in that sense. Risk is easier to assess alongside in-depth financial analysis. With regard to all of the proposals, I have concerns relating to stipulated government criteria, relating to collaboration in respect of the leaders of the three unitary councils. In January this year, a joint position was agreed by those leaders as follows. Number one, unanimous agreement in principle on their oral strategic authority linked to local government reorganisation. Number two, any local government reorganisation will need to address the boundaries of the city. Number three, currently, the city boundaries exclude built-up areas in adjacent districts that most people would recognise as the most contiguous urban area of Leicester, restricting growth potential and its long-term financial sustainability, or is the postponement of elections which was refused anyway. That was a clear statement, in my view, following the release of the government paper. Therefore, it would be unreasonable to consider why this position has changed in respect of the city, given the proposals before us, and by that I mean, we seem to be considering that the city needs enlargement. Indeed, within that city proposal, it was claimed that it took ten years to implement a city strategic growth plan and a statement of common ground. This, for me, encapsulates the problem that the city faces, and why expansion for growth is necessary. The best way of achieving this is through the surrounding co-joined urban areas, as identified as city growth areas. On a local level, this is exactly what is happening to our rural areas through the expansion of Stamford. Rutland is now in the Stamford. The NCS proposal addresses the financial sustainability of the city. It also points out that Leicester is expected to grow the fastest at thirty-one per cent. But, correct me if I'm wrong, it does not appear to address the fundamental question how growth is to be accommodated without expansion. Perhaps the complexity of the problem is too great to properly address, given the ridiculous timeline. It has left the city in a difficult situation in trying to comply with the government criteria, and their proposal to subsume two districts, while strictly in line with the criteria, in my view makes a mockery of the constraints being placed in respect of boundary changes. There simply has not been the time.
A sentence just called again.
I feel that it is considered that city enlargement is necessary to facilitate LGR and that it will devolution. Clearly, the NCS and county proposals will be deemed non-compliant, as required boundary changes in the preferred city proposal will directly impact the financial modeling and population criteria of both NCS and county proposals. Now to the South Lead proposal, which till recently, we all expected to force to consideration. There is no doubt that synergies exist, particularly along the A-one corridor. Indeed, our own economic analysis summary recently commissioned by Rutland County Council reinforces the potential for long-term growth and transformation, in greater than the South Leeds and that of the North Leicestershire level. It is extremely disappointing for many of us, Rutland residents, with just under fifty per cent placing a preference for South Leeds, particularly for an outright priority of the city of Stamford.
Okay, thank you councillor Corby. Your limits, the points of... councillor Ross.
Slow night tonight, Chairman. I think we need to recognise that the ultimate arbiter is government, regardless of the merits or demerits of the individual papers. It is my view that we have a couple of potential problems before us this evening in making the best possible case, the best case possible. We have three proposals which have either a rural or urban bias. We've also lost, as councillor Corby has mentioned, any broad political consensus, specifically on the needs of the city, and I believe that these two issues can be addressed even at this late stage. Taking Leicester County Council's proposal, the document is simply a rehash of that produced earlier this year. There has been no attempt to follow June's guidance from government to work with other parties, and this simply demonstrates a disregard for the views of the wider public. My specific issues are, this mega-county authority but four miles from City Hall will result in everything being administered in Leicester. A huge disparity in size between the two unitaries surely cannot be acceptable to government, and can only be detrimental to the working of any new mayoral authority. Economically, it will focus on the north-west and M-one corridor, corridor with the east and A-one ignored. Secondly, there is little recognition of the wider policy context, such as the implications of the NHS ten-year plan, with its emphasis on neighbouring partnerships and community care. This means that systems and procedures will require to be fundamentally rethought. Thirdly, there is no evidence of any consideration of best practice or learning from previous local government reorganisation. Fourthly, there is a great emphasis placed on the unique scale economies that the County Council would bring to Rutland and the district councils, yet nothing on innovative thinking. Their emphasis also ignores the fact that many services are customer-facing, and hence economies can typically only be delivered through back-office and commissioning procurement services and associated system changes. In summary, the county's proposal is one of the big brother knows best, and we in Rutland are to be done to. The document will only serve to confirm, in the minds of many Rutland residents, why they wanted out of Rutland County Council thirty years ago. So far as the city proposal is concerned, much like the NCS proposal, they provide considered and radical options in the spirit of the government's invitation. Unfortunately, however, they also see only a two-unitary model. They do, however, demonstrate that their proposals have been formed by learnings from earlier local government reorganisations, and the complex disaggregation process has been considered unresolved. In saying this, it is worth noting, again as councillor Corby has referred to, that disaggregation at scale in local government has so far taken longer than planned and at greater cost. Their proposal also suffers from too little debate with the districts and counties, and consequently reflects the objectives of the city. So this brings me back to the March political consensus on the need for change in boundaries for the city, and why these should still be considered. Briefly, insights from our public health services makes clear the adverse impact of poor housing standards on the health of city residents. To this can be added the illogical separation of the lives of the Fos Park retail centre, populated by shops that were until recently in the city centre. Now, since that initial submission in March, a combination of reduced housing target and increased funding via the Fair Funding Review have greatly weakened the case for the city's favoured Option One proposal. I believe, however, that the NCS grouping should at the very least seek to engage with the city's Option Two, incorporating some of the surrounding parishes, and importantly, this would assist in re-establishing some degree of political consensus in our submission to government. This brings me to the NCS proposal, which I think demonstrates all of the features expected by government, and I would certainly be more than likely to be supported by residents across the entire geography of LLR. My criticisms are few. I believe the benefits of the three-centre configuration of unitary authorities could have been developed more fully, for example, the dispersal of employment opportunities and proximity to residents. Secondly, due to the lack of constructive engagement, we NCS have been unable to establish any savings on rationalising areas at a combined city-county-Rutland level. My main criticism, however, is that due to the lack of engagement from the county and city, we have a proposal that lacks realism in its deliverability. I say this because we must ultimately work constructively with the city and county if any reorganisation is to be successfully delivered. I see this, and I believe government will see this, as a fundamental weakness in our proposal. In conclusion, I believe the North City South proposal evidences broad engagement across political groupings in Leicestershire and Rutland. This is in contrast to those of this county and city. I will therefore vote for the proposal as drafted. However, I believe that it will be improved. The councillor Waller and her district council colleagues were to include a covering letter to government stating that we regret that the city has chosen not to engage with us in the development of our submission, but we stand ready to discuss the feasibility of the city's Option Two in the interest of all residents and a balanced three-unitary reorganisation.
Thank you councillor Ross. Other members. councillor Linda Chapfield.
Thank you, Chair. I promise I will keep it brief. The results of the survey and feedback from our ward residents indicates that the Leicestershire proposal is not popular, and it appears to position Rutland as an add-on, being absorbed into Leicestershire, so, looking at the evidence, I just missed that one. The Leicester City proposal includes expanding their boundaries, and Rutland will be included, but in a Leicestershire unitary council. Again, that was not popular. North City South proposal has more thought-out detail than the other two, includes Rutland as a partner, not an add-on afterthought, seems to be in the best interests of our residents and businesses, as far as anything can be, and is closer to the government's stated criteria, which we obviously have to take into account, as this will be the government's decision. Therefore, I shall be voting for North City South.
Thank you. councillor Chuffield. councillor Mark Chuffield.
I shall also be quite brief as well. Haven't been involved for my first time in a task and finish period, which is quite I've had a chance to look at certain aspects of these proposals, and these are just my thoughts and personal views on this. The city proposal for two authority authorities involves a large expansion of the city boundaries, and one Leicestershire with Rutland on the end, which would result in two authorities massively disparate in size, leaving Rutland tanking to the end of Leicestershire. Similarly, with the whole of Leicestershire and Rutland, the city staying the same size produces an even more unbalanced size for the two authorities, and from our point of view, makes Rutland's position in the mix even more diminished. The North City South proposal, however, produces three authorities of a similar size, North Leicestershire and Rutland joining together to form one authority, thus affording Rutland a greater position, proportionally speaking, within that year authority. I acknowledge those members and residents who think that we will be better on our own to stay completely independent. I understand the sentiments of this, if not the logic, as it doesn't seem to meet any of the criteria laid down by central government. The other point to make is that with Rutland becoming a part of a larger authority, there is a chance of easing the council tax burden on the residents of Rutland. I don't think a vote to stay independent would be forgiven quickly if we miss that opportunity, however small it may turn out to be. Because of these reasons, I shall be supporting the South City.
Thank you councillor Chuffield. councillor West.
Thanks, Chairman. I feel sorry for Corby. We've got, we've got, we've got, we've got a lot of friends in Stamford, and we've got a lot of friends in Melton, and we have natural synesthetes with both. Nobody's mentioned four on Corby and North Leicestershire when it comes to the rather emotional discussions about where we lean, where we point, in the relative parts of our county. Let's get away from the light-heartedness. I've said it before, or say it again, we're not going to have a Berlin Wall built between Rutland and South Cistevan. I access my healthcare in North West Anglia, and I go to Peterborough, and I go to Stamford. I will continue to do so, and I will go to Waitrose and Morrison's while I'm there. I will continue to go to St James' in Melton, and my dentist is in Melton. Things like that won't change for us. This is more of a look at the details of the proposals for what will happen to the way local government is administered. It's not an emotional look at where we like to do things. For me, the county proposal here, which I took a day off work to read, is, I wish I hadn't bothered taking a day off work to read it, because there's not an awful lot of detail in it, and for me, that is not something I can lend any support to. The city, the city appraisal was similar, it's not, it's not happening right. For me, the North City South proposal, I have concerns about that as well. As Kevin said, I have concerns about the fact that it falls under the five-hundred-thousand threshold. But in terms of the work done to the proposal and the numbers in front of us, I'm much, much happier than those. There is a further evidence base there, which makes me more confident that we will be getting a good deal. So for me, that is where I will be voting at the moment to a less simple decision. It has to change my mind.
Thank you councillor West. Nice to hear you mention Corby, place of my birth. Any other members? councillor McRobb and councillor Heckle.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to speak about this on a rather different level than my colleagues mostly have. Very impressed with the technical detail that they've portrayed, and I can't argue with anything that has been said up until now. But for myself, I approach this on a slightly different level, and I wondered where to begin. And I thought I'd begin with pointing out that we sit here as elected members of a body that will shortly be abolished. We're also shortly to vote on which species of phoenix will arise from Rutland's ashes. And there are now three phoenix eggs on the table. One of them will soon be boiled, or maybe scrambled. But one thing that struck me was that the names of these eggs follow absolutely no naming convention at all, which is probably a fair indication of how much agreement there is between the different poultry farmers who produce them. But no matter, because although it's important that we have this debate, our vote tonight will not really decide anything. That ultimately falls to councillor Waller and the cabinet, although not by her choice, but by the terms of the legislation. Nor will councillor Waller really decide the outcome. She will merely inform government which option she believes is in the best interest of Rutland and its residents. Maybe the minister will listen, maybe not, but they'll have other competing recommendations on the table, and we can't control their thought processes or their decision. A lot has been said in the build-up to this evening about both the protests and the choices, and it's clear that some wanted the Lincolnshire option, and I have quite a bit of sympathy with that, at least as far as Stamford is concerned, and with your Waitrose, definitely, and healthcare too. I spend quite a lot of time in Stamford Hospital for various reasons. But now Links don't want us, so that egg has been taken off the table. Some clearly in the chamber tonight believe that our leader has predetermined this whole issue from the start. I don't buy that. Our MP has been busily campaigning to save Rutland's ceremonial status, but I don't think it's ever been in much doubt, honestly. It is clear that for many people, identity is something that really matters in Rutland, but I don't believe anyone can remove our identity if local people truly care about it. I can think of quite a number of examples around the country of places that maintain their local identity without having an administrative boundary that matches it. But I don't think those are the big issues. For me, the big issue is primarily about money. It's about wages in work. It's about the level of council tax. It's about our shrinking local economy, which councillor Ross has mentioned more than once in debate in this chamber. Our aging demographic and the social care costs that that implies in coming decades. I think these are the most important issues to consider. What we desperately need is the fruits of devolution to unlock investment into ultimately Rutland. It won't be delivered directly to Rutland, because Rutland as an authority will no longer exist. But which local authority we join is really just a means of accessing the new mayor's strategic resources when the mayor is elected and those resources become available. So with the Lincolnshire phoenix egg gone, we're left with one form or another of Leicestershire. Without, thank you, without going into the same detail as particularly councillor Corby has, I honestly believe we would disappear without trace in any form of Greater Leicestershire, so we're probably best served by the NCS model. Will the minister give us that choice? Who knows? But I am confident that councillor Waller and the cabinet will be guided by data, by the empirical evidence that our offices have diligently compiled over months, and that she will recommend on that basis the option that best serves Rutland's needs and its people. And I earnestly hope that's also what will be on the minister's mind when they make the decision that really matters early next year.
Thank you councillor McRobb. councillor Heckles.
I cannot support this process of local government reorganisation. It is wrong for this Labour government to push us towards the structure that risks our identity as England's smallest historic county. We attempted something similar in nineteen-seventy-four when we were absorbed into Leicestershire. It failed. We left with good reason. Those lessons appear to have been forgotten. Baroness Taylor at Stephenage would have said at the House of Lords, no forcing is involved here. I suspect she may believe that because our leader wrote to the minister on tenth of January, Rutland LGR, and asked him for it to be fast-tracked, that letter went without the knowledge or agreement of full council. It seems clear that this Labour government is attempting to dilute failing councils across the country. Leicester City Council narrowly avoided issuing a section one-one-four effectively bankruptcy notice in two thousand and twenty-four, following Birmingham and Nottingham. The Pfeaster Salisbury, Salisbury, so, even admitted that they were buying time to avoid going over the cliff. After cutting services by fifty-three per cent in the return, Leicester City also has the lowest gross disposable household income in the UK. Leicestershire County Council is also struggling. As reported by the Leicester Gazette on twenty-sixth of October, two thousand and twenty-five, the county must find ninety million this year to simply balance its debts. Even more worrying, the Care Quality Commission has rated adult social care as requires improvement. Rutland, however, is not failing. Our finance team, led by Kirsty Nuttall, deserves recognition. We are among the strongest councils in the country for adult social care, and our schools achieved excellent exam results this year. Devolution could allow Rutland to work with neighbouring councils... Evolution could allow Rutland to work with neighbouring councils under a combined authority mayor while keeping our services local. With two or three large unitaries likely to be needed to reach the 1.2 million population threshold, we could join as Rutland. I'm disappointed by how LGR has been handled, which is why we bought a vote of no confidence. The leader's responsibility was to develop viable options and to give residents a genuine choice. Instead, we relied on neighbouring district councils, councils facing abolition, who include us in their submissions. There was talk of not being invited, but Rutland should have been taking a proactive role, not waiting for others to act. As we do with any major decision, we should have had multiple options on the table and we do not. It is the job of the leader and Cabinet's step policy direction to guide officers, yet officers worked extensively on the north-south city bid, with Rutland's logo across every document, despite no equivalent engagement with South Cisteven. This is despite Rutland's own survey showing residents preferred a merger with South Lincolnshire. I am also assured by the leader of Lincolnshire up till May that our leader made no contact whatsoever. In February, full council unanimously agreed that any LGR decision must return to full council before submission. The leader says that because the constitution does not cover LGR, the decision rests solely with her under executive powers and that is not democratic. A special cabinet meeting has now been called for tomorrow. This is the same cabinet that after full council voted to keep Cabinet Sports Centre open, proposed funding it by cutting the climate change officer and flood officer posts and then unanimously voted against their own proposals. The leader says she has not decided which option for Rutland. The Local Government Chronicle reported on 15th of October that she had already ruled out merging with Leicestershire County Council. That removes both the city and the county options. The only viable proposal remaining is the one RCC had worked on, even though residents clearly prefer joining Stamford and South Lincolnshire.
Mr. Sutcliffe.
Councillor Ashley Baxter, leader of SKDC, asked on the 22nd of October for a clear commitment to the South Lincolnshire and Rutland proposal. We did not give it and so were excluded from their proposals. In 97, we left Leicestershire to put residents first. These proposals do not do that. Our residents want the option of merging with South Lincolnshire and would welcome a work amendment. Exton Ward does not want to lose its identity. Without legislation in place, nothing is guaranteed. I therefore call on the leader to request the legislation to save our ceremonial status to be fast-tracked and that any decision to be merged is deferred until this is at least secured. I finish with a part of a poem, poetically written in 1974 by a resident who was at school at that time. Any true Rutlander, wherever they roam, will declare Rutland, not Leicestershire, as their home.
Councillor Sutcliffe.
Councillor Sutcliffe. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Rutland has had a long and distinguished history fighting off plans to abolish her. Reviews and proposals take up more than a decade in the 1914s to the 1960s, but it was not until 1974 that Rutland was absorbed into Leicestershire, stripped as many saw it of her dignity and status as a county, but still at least geographically intact as a local government unit proud this with council. Rutland came back as a tier-one unitary authority, today's Rutland County Council, 23 years later, because this is what the people here wanted. 28 years on, I don't think this has changed because local self-government has been a success for Rutland. We now have a set of proposals before us which seem to me to be unsatisfactory. We have never been given the option to say, we are quite happy with Rutland as it is. Thank you very much. We are not being given an opportunity to express our preference, for any thing, but on a series of forced amalgamations with all or part of Leicestershire. We're not being presented with an opportunity to consider a South Lincolnshire option. However that came about, whether the rules were effectively managed in advance by the Labour Party in Milton, the leadership of this or that council failed to collaborate sufficiently. It seems to me that when South Lincolnshire, including obviously the district of South Cisteven and the town of Stamford, not included in discussion, discussion, were forced larger by Rutland County Council in Suncoast Donrath. On the vital matter of Rutland's ceremonial status at risk, I am cautiously pleased to say that having presented what is believed to be the biggest pen and ink signature petition to Parliament this century, gathering over 7,000 signatures by and of just six weeks across our county, I was knocking on doors myself asking for signatures, our Member of Parliament, Alicia Cummins, has now laid an amendment to the English Devolution and Community Empowerment Bill being based on Monday in the House of Commons. The amendments would protect our ceremonial county status regardless of the outcome of LGR. Whatever council Rutland is forced into, these changes will incise them. Perhaps seven or eight councillors at best out of 72 with the North Leicestershire proposal, Leicestershire County Council proposals would see us at best having five out of 90. Both of these would be a very, very long way from where we are today. Sadly, these numbers represent Rutland's power and influence through super council. And as other members have said, I expect that following the example set in Surrey, there will only be four councils, the whole of Leicestershire, Leicester, Rutland, Greater Lincolnshire. To my mind, something sacred, something special, something very English is being extinguished. But my final word goes to the people of Rutland, whom has been imposed a question of merry-go-round, local government reform in the past 18 years. My letters, penas, passes, but do not quite forget, we are the people of Rutland that never have spoken yet.
Thank you councillor Sutcliffe, councillor Karen Payne.
Thank you, Chair. And I haven't got to pay him for you tonight, I'm afraid. Though I'm a bit of a quandary here, having worked with councillor Corby on the financial evaluation of the three proposals we had available to us, as councillor Corby has already stated, there is a wide disparity in the quality of the proposals we evaluated, one being far more comprehensive than the two others. And I'm really pleased this will aid the Cabinet in their decision-making tomorrow. At a meeting last night when I updated the Large Parish Council that the South and North Cisteven proposal had been removed, that we had been removed from their proposal, there was initially a stunned silence in the room and some heated conversation. There was fear that if we joined any of the Leicestershire areas, we would lose our identity, the role of our finances and services to a bigger, more distant and empathetic entity that was not synergistic or understanding of our own Rutland identity, would have fewer councillors around the table with a minority voice. This couldn't reduce voting capability and no clout. This could also be true of the South Lincolnshire scenario, but as services are already drawn from this area, it's a known quantity that one people feel comfortable with. They wanted to know why we didn't try harder to work with the South Lincolnshire option because of these shared services. I was also asked why we have been so compliant with a government that doesn't understand Rutland is a small, successful unitary council that is good and in places excellent, but delivering to its population with some of the best financial management and adult and children's social care services in England.
Karen Payne.
Thank you, Chair. And I haven't got to pay him for you tonight, I'm afraid. Though I'm a bit of a quandary here, having worked with councillor Corby on the financial evaluation of the three proposals we had available to us, as councillor Corby has already stated, there is a wide disparity in the quality of the proposals we evaluated, one being far more comprehensive than the two others. And I'm really pleased this will aid the Cabinet in their decision-making tomorrow. At a meeting last night when I updated the Large Parish Council that the South and North Cisteven proposal had been removed, that we had been removed from their proposal, there was initially a stunned silence in the room and some heated conversation. There was fear that if we joined any of the Leicestershire areas, we would lose our identity, the role of our finances and services to a bigger, more distant and empathetic entity that was not synergistic or understanding of our own Rutland identity, would have fewer councillors around the table with a minority voice. This couldn't reduce voting capability and no clout. This could also be true of the South Lincolnshire scenario, but as services are already drawn from this area, it's a known quantity that one people feel comfortable with. They wanted to know why we didn't try harder to work with the South Lincolnshire option because of these shared services. I was also asked why we have been so compliant with a government that doesn't understand Rutland is a small, successful unitary council that is good and in places excellent, but delivering to its population with some of the best financial management and adult and children's social care services in England and Wales. Why has there been no pushback? Maintaining a thriving, effective council is in any government's or other council's best interest. Though my quandary is that the majority of my residents still feel their places either with South Cisteven or in South Lincolnshire or for us true neighbours of Rutland. I have explained the complex why and wherefore of why we were in the situation we're in and why we only have three proposals on the table, but as their elected member, I feel I should support their views. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Payne. And councillor Wilby.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'm minded of the opening statement prayer that we all make when we stand up and begin these meetings, that we should remember that we are doing the best for our residents in Rutland. I have to say the whole of this LGR process has been a bag of worms from the start. The timescales that we've been afforded have been absolutely ridiculous. I'm not a Luddite. I'm quite happy to deal with change and move along, but the amount of time that has been given to our staffs who have already worked their butts off to keep us solvent and on the right track has been, you know, awful. The papers that I have read, 190 papers, you'd have to speed read them through, but what I saw was lots of nice language, but very little actual positive ways of achieving the savings that the government think they're going to get from this. I don't envy the executive in having to make the decision tomorrow because you're having to work on information which is unfounded and not worth. What I can say is that for the rest of us, once we get through this and a decision is made, then we are all going to have to pull together to make sure that we work to get the best sort of result for us because, as councillor Payne has just said, we're going to be reduced to either 4.65 or 7 councillors and they are going to have to work really damn hard to get the best result for Rutland. So I know the decision is out of our hands now. It's been poorly founded, but I'm glad that councillor Corby is excited by the threat of the audit and risk because I think over the next 18 months, you are going to be working very hard to see whether savings can be actually made. Thank you.
Councillor Wilby, councillor Farina.
Councillor, since last December 2024, when the local government reorganisation was announced in the publication of the English Devolution White Paper, councils up and down the country have had to negotiate and work on a proposal which suited the criteria which was laid out by government, all the while consulting their residents and providing information to them regarding these proposals. The whole process has indeed caused untold stress and anxiety to our communities. Please bear in mind that nobody at the last general election voted for this. With local government reorganisation and the forming of these new super councils comes risks financially and democratically. For Rutland, the risks include loss of status of an independent county, loss of identity and our ceremonial county, which has been put in severe jeopardy and insufficient representation by our population. As Rutland councillors, we currently have three proposals, three models in front of us, asking for our endorsement. Heart of hearts, if I had felt that the process and engagement of all options was sufficient and thorough, then a decision I would have come to would have been much easier. Of course, as all councillors, we represent our residents to the very best of our ability in a moralistic and ethical way. I am just one elected voice, but I have also wanted for us to be able to truly understand the views and opinions of the residents we serve by ultimately taking the vote to these proposals to a local referendum. And then through the referendum, we have a mandate as to what model and proposal should be supported by council and thus proposed to government. 12 months ago, none of us wanted to be in this position which is laid before us and on a personal level, not just as a county councillor, tonight is going to be a truly difficult and complicated decision to be able to endorse any one proposal.
Councillor Farina. Councillor Begget.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot of facts tonight, a lot of political boston, revelation that Labour shop is like this.
You thought we were all tasteless?
I'm going to speak a little bit from the heart. I became a councillor after the passing of my father who served Rutland and in particular the local community that I grew up in. This reorganisation would mean nothing less than less representation for our local community, especially with the removal of the SKDC option. I also suggest a larger authority will mean it's unlikely most working as people like me will be able to continue in post, making it a far worse council. Final decision is not made by us by central government. They don't know our community, they don't know our history and this is not the fault of the leader or the executive, this is sitting by central government. At this point, I cannot see how I can vote for any of these proposals in front of us as I do not see how this will improve the life of Rutland residents and the services that they receive. My abstention, which is likely, will show my support for Rutland not just an easy way out. This really feels like Turkey's voting for Christmas. Our residents will be worst off. This is being done unto us, I think as councillor Ross may have said. But when a decision is taken, I will do my work my hardest to get the best outcome for our residents and try and leave Rutland in the best case it can be.
Councillor Begget. Councillor Ray Payne.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I don't like this at all, no one here does. I particularly don't like the democratic deficit where, as has been mentioned by one or two other councillors, there might be one councillor, six, seven, eight thousand electors. That's not the democratic system that I'm a part of, probably won't be, but that's okay. I say to my colleagues in the Cabinet, a couple of things. First of all, we've got to look for the financial advantages that we can squeeze out of this for Rutland. We've got to look for what we can get out of it, it won't be much. Maybe increase our business rate income, look at possibilities of economies of scale, sorry officers, that does mean you, and possible reduction in council tax at some point. But those are the things we need to be looking at, or you need to be looking at, my you, to see how we can do. Also, we need an element of continuity. I'm very concerned about the fire and police services. I do not want them and they're excellent. I know we criticize them on occasions, but we are very fortunate with the people that work for us and do this dangerous job. We do not want disruption, we do not want a hiatus, we do not want a vacuum on our streets or in our potential accident spots. So that's another factor that we've got to look at to maintain the safety of ourselves and our residents. We talk about our residents a lot. Their safety must be paramount. Finally, if I could, I'd throw this whole thing in the sea. Um, finally, if I could, I'd throw this whole thing in the sea. But unfortunately, although I have my fair amount of hubris, I can't on this occasion do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Payne. Any other members?
Sorry, I'll be quick as well. Um, I'm going to focus, I'm going to focus in on, um, one particular part of the criteria, which is that new unitary structures should enable stronger community engagement and deliver genuine opportunity for neighbourhood empowerment. Um, I firmly and quite passionately believe that when decisions affect our communities, people who live in those communities should have the greatest possible influence over how those decisions are shaped. Um, and I think that right now, one of Rutland's greatest strengths is the personal relationship we have with our residents and the power we give to our communities to make those decisions that impact them. Um, and I think that's something that's only really achievable in a small and well-served county like our own. And unfortunately for me, all three of these options today, in my view, take power away from communities and in some way reduce democratic accountability. The proposal from Leicester or Leicestershire replaces in very large authorities, as we've touched on, both geographically and in terms of population. Um, and even the North City South model would increase the ratio of one councillor for every one thousand one hundred and twenty-five people we have now to more than four thousand residents per councillor. Um, at present, we are all accessible, well-known in our communities and able to engage directly with people we represent. And we can't walk down the street without someone recognising us and talking to us about some things going on with the council. And that's a great thing, and it's what makes Rutland so great. Um, but I feel that could be lost with any of these two proposals. Um, alongside the sort of, kept that sort of personal relationship, each of the options on the table, resulting councillors having to take on significantly more casework, councillor Beggy touched on this. Um, and this will consume a great deal of time and limit the ability for those working in full-time status for election. Um, and that amount of work will also limit our capability to be active and visible in our communities. So I think there's a load of issues there around democratic accountability being reduced and power being taken away from communities. And I do accept that at least the Leicestershire City South proposal attempts to address this democratic gap by introducing neighbourhoods, which I don't feel are really well explained. Um, and I couldn't really see how they'd be representative or behold accountable. But there was at least an attempt there to, I think, address the gap. I'd be really interested to see how that develops through the process. Um, but with all that said, and as much as I disagree with being forced into this situation, the reality is that we have three options in front of us. And I have to accept that choosing none of them would leave Rutland at greater risk, with little or no influence over decisions to decipher to find our own future. As much as we may want it in some ways, an independent Rutland is not one of those options. Um, it has been made entirely clear that we cannot be considered, that option cannot be considered because it does not meet the requirements set by government. And calling for something that cannot be delivered would be irresponsible. And I really feel we owe it to our residents to do more than that. We owe them a really serious attempt to secure the best possible outcome in the given circumstances. In my view, reluctantly, North City and South proposal offers the strongest result for residents and is the only option that makes a clear, um, a clear attempt to maintain local accountability and support genuinely community empowerment. It also offers, um, real opportunities for cost savings and perhaps even a chance, um, to reduce on fairly high levels of council tax. Um, but at heart, I do truly believe our closeness to our communities is what makes us a special council, and I'm really worried about losing that. Um, councillor Ross mentioned about writing the letter as part of our submission. I'd love to see us write a letter saying that's something we as a council feel strongly about and would like to take into account and to express our dissatisfaction with the process overall. Um, but here in the position we are now, refusing to engage with the process would be a worse possible outcome for our residents and our county. Uh, for these reasons, I will support the North City South proposal unless one changes, I might live next time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lambert. Um, councillor Hemsey.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, we're told we have a choice, and I have to be really honest, I don't see we've had any choice in this. We have no say in actually what's going to happen because it's been decided by somebody outside this space. I sat in front of, you know, some of the top people in the government and they don't understand Rutland as a council. Beggy was saying, they don't understand how we operate. We are very successful. I would like to say first off a really big thank you to the officers for the work they've put in to get something together. Because when you're trying to work with people you don't want to work with, you're not interested, and same for the Cabinet, you know, it's really hard to drag something together. So we've got something, but I don't think it's even Cabinet's place to make a decision on whether, where we're going because it's just going to be overruled. So I see that the future is for us is what we do after this point. The decision will be made, we need to fight really hard and our communities need to pull together. And I've said on many occasions, you know, our businesses need to be strong, our sports communities need to be strong, our towns and our villages need to be strong. It doesn't matter what national government does to it. It doesn't matter whether we're part of Leicestershire or somewhere else. We need to be strong as a unit and ignore what happens other than asking for support. But we need to be noisy about it and we need to be strong. So I want the best people in Rutland to be able to step forward for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hemsey. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much, Chair. None of us want to be here, least worst. Hmm, would be nice if Rutland stayed the same. Aren't we obedient? The government has set criteria that doesn't solve the problem of local government. Councillors are going bust because of demand-led adult social care and SEN budget amongst other things. They have not done a cost analysis on the savings that are going to be made by creating mega five hundred K authorities. That was from a BBC FOI. The premise of this legislation was based on a two thousand and twenty report by the County Council Network. Apparently there would be two point nine billion pounds worth of savings if they managed to change the size of unitaries. That's actually been revised. It's actually going to cost eight hundred and fifty million over five years, apparently according to new research, and maybe not even any savings. I will, Chair, stick to what we are talking about, which are the proposals. And it's clear the North City South has had the most detail in it, and I won't repeat what colleagues have said about that. But what I am going to look at is what Rutland is about to lose. Twenty-four, twenty-five annual report was a good report. We were doing really well. We are doing really well against those national benchmarks. And in fact, we're exemplars of excellence in some areas. That point's already been made. In that meeting, I asked the question, at what point are we going to start fighting for Rutland? Has anybody answered the question, why is Rutland so successful? Is it because of the fabulous people here? Probably. Is it actually because we're small, so we target funds where we need to do put them? We've always worked in a financial envelope and it has been really tough, but we have succeeded. Currently, Rutland has a gross budget of about ninety-five million pounds. Yet there are statutory functions in there. But that's money that is in our control that twenty-seven people here in Oakham, in Rutland, make a choice. Capital highways maintenance. We are a unitary authority. We are a county council. We are a district council. We are about to have that ripped away from us on the basis that legislation, the Labour Government legislation, is flawed. It's not going to solve local government and they are not listening. I looked at the North City South, you know, because I've done scrutiny work on it. And in that, and I take councillor Lambert's point, um, there clearly has been a tension about what is important to Rutland, et cetera. We will, under this proposal, become a neighbourhood. In the city proposal, it would be an area committee. And like other people in this chamber, I thought, I'm going to follow the money. I'm going to follow the autonomy. I looked at page hundred and seven of the proposal, by the way, very helpful table. Delivery of local services. No. Decision-making, scope to include. Partnership collaboration to administer grant funding. Scope. Devolved council budgets for local projects. Scope. That's just a few of the things. In short, is there any committed budget for this county, this unitary authority, this district council, to have a say for its residents with twenty-seven people? No, zero pounds. So that will be ninety-five million gross budget for a lot of other people, seventy-odd people of which six of us will decide what is best for Rutland. So, no budget, no autonomy and no independence. Leader, councillor Lambert has mentioned a letter, I believe there's a letter being mentioned over in this neck of the woods. I urge you and I implore you to send a covering letter to the Minister of State to point out flawed legislation won't solve the problem and Rutland will lose an awful lot that we jolly well don't deserve to do because we do a good job by our residents. I think I'm within my thirty seconds, Chair, but please, can we start making a fuss about this? Thank you.
We've got another four seconds, if you'd like, councillor Stevenson. Sorry? We've got another four seconds.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Stevenson. Any other members? In that case, um, thank you to everyone who's contributed. There will now be an informal vote and I will ask members who are not on Cabinet to raise their hands to indicate which proposals or proposal they think best meet the criteria. And to reiterate, this vote is not a formal decision of council as an agreement to submission of a proposal is an executive decision which will be taken by Cabinet at their meeting tomorrow. So you're not required to indicate support if you don't wish to, and the number of members who indicate support for no option will also be noted. So please ensure your hand is raised and remains raised until, um, until Mr. Delaney has counted and noted your indication. All those in support of the North City South proposal, please raise your hands.
Thank you, Chair.
All those in support of the Leicestershire County Council proposal, please raise your hands.
Thank you, Chair.
All those in support of the Leicester City Council proposal, please raise your hands.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, members. Um, so, Delaney, can you add the numbers, please?
So nine members have indicated support for the North City South proposal and other non-Cabinet members, nine members have not indicated any preference.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes this item. Item sixteen is any urgent business. Uh, I've not been made aware of any other urgent business for consideration. Um, the date of the next council meeting is Thursday, the twenty-sixth of February, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, that concludes the business for this meeting. Thank you to members, uh, and members of staff officers and members of the public for attending. The meeting is closed at-